We're back in regular session. Please stand, remove cover, and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Injury.
Item five is informational reports included in the packet and available on the website, I believe. Now, too, is the March 2022 Contractor Newsletter. Also is 5.2. It is fourth quarter financial update from last year, and Fay, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have finally got pretty much to the end of 2021. I've got most of the journal entries done, and we're getting close to finalizing that, getting the annual report done and getting our auditors in here. So my first sheet basically shows general fund revenues at the top and general fund expenses at the bottom, comparing 2021 to 2020. And as we've said pretty much all year long, 2021 has been a great year. We've done very well. We've about 10% higher than last year. I did take the CARES Act out of 2020. That really skewed things. That was the $1,781. So I had, did, I did just put that on the side to show that, you know, we did get that money in 2020. The general fund expenses, they were a little bit higher, but we had like different things. Sampson's Lease, the SMRI Heritage, the money for the SMRI, and then also the Heritage Marks. There, the ambulance, I did take that, remove that out of there. And it just on the side also, which is the 242-489, that was money, that was COVID money, transferred over to the ambulance fund, and so showed that. Planning and permitting, there was printer equipment to print maps, so that was purchased. So that's why that's a little higher. Rally, of course, in 2020, we didn't have any activities because of COVID. And of course, this year, 2021, we made up for that and had a lot of good events for the rally. Other than that, did you have any questions on this? If not, we'll move on to the next one, which is my, the cash. This is actual cash. This is cash that we have in the bank. The largest amount, of course, is our checking account, and that's $6,317,000. We, we used to have quite a bit of that money in CDs, but CDs, the interest is so poor on them that we've moved most everything into checking. We have savings. That is basically, I transfer money into that every month, so that number stays pretty low. We actually make more money in the checking than we do the savings. And so that money is transferred over, so that's why there's only $6,700. Medicare, Medicaid, that type of stuff is what's dropping into our savings. ATM money, that's just, we've got the three locations for the ATM. Pioneer Bank, that's our only CD that we have, and so we've been holding on to that. Alice Wiggins Dunn, that never changes. That's a trust fund, so that stays the same. Then the library does have a savings account, and that's where the interest is dropping in from the Alice Wiggins Dunn's Trust. Express, Express Deposit Account, that's an account that we keep with Express Bill Pay, which is our bill paying, where we compare utility bills. I transfer everything out of that except for $25,000 every month. And so the reason we do that is because we actually save money on our fees with Express Bill Pay if we leave $25,000 in that account. And then the last one is a new one for 2021. That is the Sturgis Rally Agency Endowment Fund. And so that is the one where we put in $80,000, and then there was interest, and then they matched, or they put in $20,000. So any questions on that? So then our next one is just our interest off of these bank accounts and CDs and stuff. Of course, our TIF interest is our biggest. Revenue fun, or, you know, revenue stream. The rest of them are, they're, they're what they used to be a long time ago. So $128,531 is what our interest was for 2021. And our next one will be our cash, CDs, and loan advances. So this basically shows in each fund where the cash is sitting at. So you've got your total cash, and then you've got your cash that are sitting within these funds. And these are our main ones. There's other smaller special revenue funds that we have cash in, too. So this would never total up to that $6 million, but this is, these are the largest funds that, and most active funds. So $4 million, a little over, we're a little over what we were in 2020. Liquor Fund continue, continues to do really well, up to 260, and that does include the transfers out. We're transferring, as you know, we're transferring a lot of money into general fund from the liquor stores. So Water Fund, hanging in there, about the same, a little bit more. Waste Water Fund, that's still up there. Of course, we still have not paid our last payment for the, the final wastewater. So that's still hanging in there pretty, pretty good. So that'll be a little under $1 million when we pay, pay that final bill on that. Sanitary Fund is growing, and, and we wanted it to grow. We, we actually, the fees were increased so we could buying them garbage trucks, trying to save for the garbage trucks. And then Ambulance Fund, they had a very good, good year. Fort Meade came through and did start paying stuff. We've just, they've really got it down well on how they are collecting and getting stuff billed out right away. So we had a very good year in, in the ambulance. Any questions? Then the next one is our revenue and expense comparisons. You can, revenue on the top, expense on the bottom. You can just see that, why we've done pretty good throughout. If your revenues are a little higher, it always helps. Other than that, on that, it's just about the same. I did not include the revenue or expense on the ambulance side when we bought the equipment. So this is just operating. It does not include any of the ambulance, the vehicles. Any questions on this? And then this is the one that I only give to you once a year. Basically, what this, we've always talked about budget and actual. And so this basically tells you what we give back, basically, if you want to say it goes back in. And so each, like Mayor and Council, and this does include contingency. Contingency is in the Mayor and Council Department, and so it does show that we give back. And so going back to 2015, it shows you each, each department and how much they've given back. And then the total over these many years, which I believe is seven years, about $4 million. So, so we do quite well on our budget. We, we try to quit, you know, and this does include supplements, of course, but we do try to keep within our means. Any questions?
Any questions for Fay for 2021 wrap-up? Procedurally, we'll go through the audit, and we'll see that here in a few months, so.
Yep, they'll be here, the, pretty much the month of April, April, we'll be working on it.
All right, thanks Fay.
You bet.
Item six is announcements and praise. I'd like to take a moment and pray here, if you'd like to join me. Heavenly Father, sovereign Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to come together and meet, to show you praise. We pray that many people in our community are facing challenges, health-wise, spiritually, mental health-wise. We just pray that the opportunity is there for you, Lord, for them to press into you. We know we're broken, and we know we're righteous through you, so thank you for your sacrifice on the cross. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I got a couple notes here. Sturgis Strikers has a ribbon cutting on Thursday, this coming Thursday at 5:00 PM for the new owners. Then on Sunday coming up here, week from yesterday, is the Kiwanis Soup Supper. That's on the 13th of March. That is at the Community Center, and that starts at 4:30. The following day, which is Monday, the 14th, is the Alliance of Churches Potato Feed. That also starts at 4:30 at the Community Center. So things that we do quite frequently each year, annual, annual deals fundraisers for great causes in our community. If you can make it, please, please contribute. Does Council have anything to add to announcements and praise? Item seven is Department Head Update, something we've done in the past and we've come back to doing, where we ask Department Heads to come and give Council and the public an update on what's going on. Tonight, we have Sean, so I'll turn it over to you, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council, and thank you for this opportunity to, for me to inform you of what our ambulance service has done this last year and how great a year we have had. 2021 was the greatest year, I believe, Sturgis Ambulance has had in a long time. I do not know the last time that we were in the positive at the end of the year, and I find that huge. $168,000 to the positive, which is a huge step for us, I believe. We were able to give raises to our staff. That was much needed. Thank you for doing that. And for the first time in numerous years, our ambulances don't have over 200,000 miles on them, which some find that, you know, isn't a big deal, but it really is. Our current fleet is what we have here, our six ambulances that we have. The one with most miles has $131,000. Otherwise, we're down below. We also have a UTV we use up on Red Cut or something if we need it, and we do have an Ambu Bus that is available. If you look at our 2021 in review, calls for service were up about 200 compared to 2020. Our revenue was up $400,000. To me, that is huge. With the reimbursement rates and stuff with our insurance companies, I find that is huge for us to be up that much. Charges for the year were $1.5 million, which is also very good. We did implement in 2020 and 2021, charging for lithocysts and those kind of things, which many of you know, we go on quite a few of those, and we have to call extra crews in, thus paying overtime to those people we have to call in if there's another call and standby. Your current staffing of the ambulance right now includes six critical care paramedics, 13 paramedics, one advanced EMT, two EMTIs, and 12 EMTs. I wanted to take this chance to sort of maybe educate you guys and the public on how important our EMTs and paramedics are to our community. I don't think a lot of people understand what EMTs and paramedics actually do. EMTs have to complete 150 classroom hours, just in the classroom. They then do 32 hours of ride time. They make decisions in the field with nobody standing there to tell them what to do. It's their education that gets us there. They can administer oxygen, Narcan international, which is huge. The drug use that's going on, for them to be able to give that, it can save a life. They can also assist with any home meds. Our paramedics are, I don't even know how to explain it, we need them, and they are very valuable to us. For them to get a license, they must first have their EMT license, then they do 800 hours of classroom, then 800 hours of clinical time, for a total of 1,600 hours. And we are being very cautious with that. I think that we spend over 2,000 hours to get our paramedic. As a paramedic in the field, we can intubate, as a respiratory therapist does. We read cardiac monitors, as a cardiac cardiologist do in the hospital, and make those decisions in the field. We can give IV medication to someone in cardiac arrest, someone with a cardiac rhythm that needs transmitted or trends to another rhythm. We are literally giving lifesaving things. And for the raises you guys gave us, I appreciate that so much because you're showing us that you do understand the importance of having us in your community. Oh, whoops. How do I go back, Lisa? There. Our current wage increase that you guys gave everyone this last year included critical care paramedics for $23.50. What a critical care paramedic over a paramedic. It's another 100-hour class. But when a critical care paramedic that is licensed takes a transfer to Rapid City that is a vended patient or a patient that is on two or more meds, we as an ambulance service can charge $1,500 more than we do on normal ALS calls. So it's huge to have those degrees there. Our paramedics are making 22, advanced 18, EMTI 17, EMTs 15, and drivers 12. I'm really messing this up. We decided as a crew to go outside of our ambulance to get more income into the ambulance because of reimbursement with insurance to get us the raises and the equipment that we needed. We have taken on a hospital contract for $31,500, which you'll approve later tonight. What this contract is, is we go in and do their intubations during the night and weekends. We take the call, and we go in and actually do the intubations because they only have one respiratory therapist at the hospital. We've done the jail contract for $100,000. The reason we find this contract very important is we are the medical that's called on weekends, nights, et cetera. So we end up there anyways. If we already have knowledge of these inmates and, you know, what they're on, what's going on with them, it saves us all money and time. Additional funding for the coverage area, the rural Meade County ambulance district gives us 50, or 63,000. Lawrence County gives us 1,200 to go up the canyon. The city of Sturgis, last year, you guys gave us 110. This year, it'll be 135,000. And then currently, Meade County is paying us $300 per call to respond out into Enning's area. If we get a call out there, it doesn't matter if it's a cancel, a refusal, or any of that. When we get out there, they're paying us $300. Additional services that we provide within Sturgis and in the community. Medical standbys for schools during sporting events, the freshman impact with the high school. We do it here in Sturgis and in Faith. We find this very valuable because we don't want to be the ones on scene of juveniles wrecking, and the parents have them to be told. We do ALS intercepts for local ambulance services, including Newell, Enning, Faith, Eagle Butte. If any of them are coming this way, and they don't have a paramedic and they need one, we will intercept with them. We have two individuals doing high school internships now. We have job shadowing available. We have a young lady coming next week from Spearfish to do a job shadowing one day. We have med students from the hospital coming to see what free hospital care is all about. We have a large involvement with the state EMS and ambulance association to make changes within our scope of practice and to increase insurance reimbursement. We currently are working on an AED grant for the community of Sturgis. We went to AED.com, and they are giving AEDs away to businesses and public facilities. We sent this out to all the businesses and public facilities in town. Sturgis Motorcycle Museum called me last week, and they were the first one to receive it. So they're doing their training Wednesday night, and we'll be putting an AED in their facility. We're hoping to get approximately 100 to 150 of them into our community, which is huge because for every minute someone is not defibrillated after they collapse, their chance of survival decreases 10%. So it is large, very important that we get it into the communities. We offer refresher trainings in-house for area EMS agencies. Recently, we have testified at the legislature for proposed law changes within EMS. We help at district refreshers, teaching classes. We have assisted Enning ambulance and get their doors reopened. We helped teach a class. We went out there and did EVOC, HIPAA, et cetera, to help them get their doors open. It's very important to us. We offer EMT classes, monthly training for Newell. And our EMT representation, I am an NREMT rep. We have four within the state of South Dakota. So we are able to do ALS testing if need be. And we are only one, we are one of only three ambulance services within the state that have an Ambu Bus for mass casualties, which I find is very important. Sioux Falls and Rapid City are the other two. Things happening or changing within our services last year. We have four individuals who are now certified to do drug testing. We are going out to local businesses and for them not to have to go to Rapid or something to get their drug testing. We are able to do it now. We signed our first contract with a business just last week, and we will be doing drug testing for them here in Sturgis and in Rapid at their location. We have committees within our ambulance service to increase our productivity. We have doubled our instructor coordinators, thus bringing more training to town, bringing more people to town. The last week of April, we will be doing a critical care paramedic class here in Sturgis. It will be the only one that's available within the state of South Dakota right now. We will have a company out of Tennessee coming in to teach this, and we'll be having 40 people here for a week that'll be coming to Sturgis for class every day or staying here in Sturgis. So I feel the training not only helps us, but helps the community as a whole. We are in communication with Western Dakota Tech on dual enrollment for our high school seniors, thus hopefully increasing our workforce. We've actually been asked this year to do billing for other ambulance services because of our increase in income. We've got the CHW program going. We received a grant from Department of Health to community healthcare workers, and we'll probably be presenting that to you later, I believe. A couple of you came to the meeting. We went to a rotating schedule, additional weekend staffing. We have narcotic boxes, locked boxes in all of our ambulances now. We started a peer support group that we have sent individuals to training on. Suicide and fire in EMS is huge, and burnout. We feel that we need to do something for our people. The things we see and the things that you have to endure is not what a normal person does. And we feel that we need to do something to help them. And by just sitting back and waiting for something bad to happen, we felt we need to take the next step. We are currently working on Class B retirement, and we are currently doing fundraising for a fourth Lucas machine, which costs about $15,000. We didn't feel this should come out of our budget. We felt that we've never had four Lucuses. It's something that's super nice. A Lucas is a machine that does CPR for you so that you can free one person up. That person then can get meds ready. They can be making sure the airways open. They can be calling the hospital. You don't always have all the hands you need, so it's super important to have that other person available. I went to my crew today, and I said, you guys, what's some thoughts about this last year? What did you guys feel changed? What did you guys feel good, bad? They felt our professional growth with the challenges of the last year, that we grew as a crew. We didn't give in. That with rotating schedules and the raises, it brought experienced staff members to Sturgis. We did pull some from other agencies because of the raises and because of the rotating schedule. Great to have reliable ambulances that we don't have to worry about breaking down, which is really huge, and thank you guys for that. More opportunities within the department for advancement, like I said, the critical care class. And we always offer advanced classes and all of those. We are one of the more critical train transport services in the area besides Life Flight. This last week, we had a neighboring ambulance service that had a patient was going through town, and the patient coded on him. They stopped at the Sturgis Hospital. They got him intubated and everything. The ambulance service could not take him on, and it's one of the larger ambulance services because they did not know how to take a ventilator. Our ambulance service had to be called to come down, which is fine, to get that patient because we are trained to do it. So I feel that's something huge on our service. I really believe in all of them. We have less open shifts, mean, less burnout. Despite all the challenges, our morale has stayed high and more training opportunities than ever before. We have set a training schedule forward that we will do training this first, or second Tuesday of every month. We have the training set out for a year, and everyone feels that they can know what they're getting trained on. We have opportunities all the time. We try to support EMS Week, or we don't. We support EMS Week. We don't try. And we look for you guys to help support us this year. It's May 15th through the 20th. The theme this year is Rising to the Challenge, so Sturgis Ambulance is doing exactly that. On Sunday, May 15th, we'll have a 5K color run and a pancake breakfast. On Monday, we'll have an open house. We're having the heart and vascular screening again that we had last year, and also a blood drive. Tuesday will be seatbelt checks and safety promotions in the community. Wednesday will be elementary education. Thursday will be Stop the Bleed and CPR and AED classes, and Friday will be our EMS Services Sports Tournament. We have that every year to just have morale with the other ambulance services in the area. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Oh, sure, I will. Well, Sean, thank you so much for being here this evening. And I want to just say that impressive is the word that, that I'm thinking. I just am so impressed with the work that you and everyone up there with the ambulance staff, just for everything that you do. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Sean. I had one question about the critical care paramedic.
Yes.
And you made the comment that we can charge $1,500 more. Is that for every call, or is that just for certain types of calls?
It's for critical calls. They have to have a ventilator. They have to be on two or more medications. They have to be post-cardiac arrest, something that is critical. So it would, and it's only on hospital, hospital. If it's 911s, we charge ALS, too, which is about $300 more, I believe.
Thank you.
Well, thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. You might not remember, but Jason, Mark, and I are on the council, and you gave your last ambulance update nine years ago. And it is unbelievable turnaround, and I think that's all you. So thank you very much.
Item eight is City Manager's Report. Daniel, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Not a lot on the update for today. I just wanted to note that Jeannie is returning. She is not going to be working at Finance, so she's going to be taking over the morning shifts over at the Community Center. So that shift is going to be filled with a very wonderful former city employee who's coming back. Any questions?
Thanks, Daniel.
Thanks.
Item nine is Consent Calendar. We have 9.1 to 9.3 tonight. One is the minutes, and two is setting public hearings. So does Council wish to remove any of those three items to discuss individually? About anybody in the public? Is there a motion for the consent calendar? Got a first by Becca. Second by Dave. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed, the no. Please note unanimous. Fay, for the minutes for a roll call. Item 10 is Approval of Claims. Questions, comments, concerns on those? Public or Council?
I look at it a second time. It's not, it's not inconsequential.
Is there a motion then?
Don't move.
We got a first by Mike on the claims.
Second.
We have a second by Aaron. Any last discussion? We'll go ahead and roll call these. I'll start with myself. Um, yes, Becca?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
Bills are paid. Item 11 is Public Hearings. 11.1 is Consider a Variance Request on Butte View Drive. Mr. Smith is coming forward, and thanks, Dave.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you tonight is a variance request to a minimum 18-foot side setback from Kimberly Farrell of 1810 Butte View Drive. They requesting the setback to allow for a new addition to the existing home. The property is currently described as Lot 44 of Murray Track 1 and is owned as low-density residential housing. The site plan requests a three-foot variance or 15-foot versus the 18-foot required to the side setback to allow for the addition. The site plan requests a three foot variance or fifteen foot versus the eighteen foot required to the side setback to allow for the addition. The applicant has submitted a site plan to add the twelve hundred square foot addition to the home. And since the property is a corner lot at the intersection of Butte View and West Ida, an eighteen foot side setback is required for traffic visibility and general public view and access. Title eighteen point oh five oh five of the city ordinance is where this is found. The applicant requests to encroach three feet into that eighteen foot setback into West Ida, which will leave fifteen feet from the addition to the actual property line. As West Ida Street is not a main thoroughfare, staff does not anticipate any negative consequence of the addition if the addition is allowed to be built. The planning commission reviewed the request at the February eighth meeting and voted to recommend the approval. We had sent out letters to the neighboring property owners and received no negative comments.
Any questions for Dave from council?
Move to approve.
We got a first by Mike and a
Second.
Second by Kevin. Public discussion. We have first and second on the floor to grant the variance request of three feet. None being seen. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed to no. That motion carries. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Item eleven two is a public hearing to consider a special event license for the annual tree lighting on December first. Mr. Cole's coming forward. We, uh, last couple of meetings, we've had a lot of these. We're trying to get them all done ahead of time so we don't have to have special meetings and make sure we have everything covered. So over to you, Jerry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Each year, the Chamber of Commerce and the city hosts the tree lighting down at the Rally Point Plaza. And this year is no exception. The chamber is requesting an approval of a beer and wine special event license for Thursday, December first, twenty twenty-two. The Loud American will provide the SEL and will be open from six to eight P M.
Any questions for Jerry?
I make a motion to approve this SEL.
First by Aaron.
Second.
I have a second by Dean. How about public comments, questions, concerns, considering this is public hearing? None being heard with the first and the second on the floor. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed to no. That motion carries. Thanks, Jerry. Eleven point three is a special events license for the annual Lincoln Day dinner. This is on May thirteenth. I got Faye down for this. Over to you, ma'am.
Yes. So they have requested an SEL from Loud American. And all paperwork has been given to me and everything is in order and this is a yearly yearly event. So I would recommend approval.
Any questions for Faye? Is there a motion? First by Dave.
Second.
Second by Angela. Public or council comments, questions, concern, considering this special events license? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed to no. That motion carries. Eleven point four under public hearings. We have a request to table this due to not being enough time in the paper for public notice. So there would be action needed to table this till the next meeting, I believe, is the plan.
Please.
For the transfer.
I'll move to table.
First by Dean. Second by Aaron to table. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed to no. We will reconvene after proper public notices obtained. Item twelve is reports. Twelve point one is second reading on our ordinance within title sixteen. Mr. Miller's been carrying this load, but with his absence, Mr. Marshall has been gracious to take it over. So over to you, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you may recall, the last time this came before you, it included a recommendation for oversized or large vehicle parking on Main Street. After extensive discussion, council concluded that that subject was either inappropriate or needed further study to find a more suitable resolution for the problem of large vehicles in downtown Sturgis. So that section of the revised ordinance has been removed, leaving the ordinance revision with only those items that were unopposed or had no negative comment at the first reading. So although that is a brief report, that is the sum and substance of what you have before you today. An ordinance that you had approved and fall at its first reading. Staff recommends that you approve it this evening as well.
Questions for Mark from council?
Have we had any focus groups on what we're going to do with downtown Sturgis as far as the extra large vehicles?
None that I am aware of, Mr. Bashan.
Go ahead.
Thank you. You know, based on last meeting, we were going to put that in the infrastructure committee. I did put that on the agenda we made on Wednesday. At least we'll start the process and kind of looking what the problem is. Don't expect any solution on this next meeting, but ultimately we'll start looking at the problem and at some point have some recommendations.
Appreciate that. Is there a motion for second reading? We have first by Dave.
Second.
We got a second by Becca. Public input on the second reading of title sixteen, traffic. Counsel, any last questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed to no. Please note unanimous for a roll call there, Faye. Thank you. Twelve two. This is a contract with Monument Health. And Ms. Fisher is coming back forward to explain what she's touched on earlier.
This is a contract that we've done for four or five years. What takes place is we take call during the evening and on weekends when their respiratory therapist is not there. She covers now twenty-five percent of the call. We cover seventy-five percent of the call. If we are asked to stay there longer, they pay us by the hour if we're there for over four hours. We end up with these patients anyways to transport them onto Rapid. So it's something that if we go down, we intubate them, we get them on our vent right away. It's better for patient care, transition of care, et cetera.
Makes a lot of sense. And I think to your point, Sean, that over the years, we've done this before, but it's evolved and we've learned how how it works and what the timing is and everything. So
Correct.
I think it's a, it's a learning curve, but we're getting pretty good at it with this one for sure.
Yes, we are. And we do offer fifty dollars a night for standby for a medic to take it and they would respond. If they aren't able, if no one signs up, then either I or the on-call crew covers, which the on-call crew usually goes anyways because they're going to be going onto Rapid with them. So it's just makes sense for them to go.
Questions for Sean or for staff on this contract from council? Is there a motion? We have first by Angela and a second by Aaron. Any last discussion, council or public? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed to no. That motion carries. Thanks, Sean. Item thirteen is other matters that come before the council. An opportunity of non-agenda items to take a moment in time to bring it to the attention of council. Francie, come on up.
It's been a really long time since I've been here. I am coming before you because I am asking some assistance. I'm not sure if you're aware of it, but Bob Davis is in serious health. And there are a group of us who would like to express to him how much he's been to our community. And we would like to, and this was a recommendation from Allison Creed, that he always does the pictures on Main Street. So let's do a picture of people saying, Bob, we're thinking of you in front of his store. I think this would necessitate a closing of the street, but I'm not sure. And that's why I'm here because we'd like to do this toward the end of the week. But we just thought of it today. So I wanted to have everything in place that if we do have to close the street, we can do that. He has been transported back here. He is in Sturgis at hospice. Do you have any questions?
I think to answer your question, I think when there's a public hearing set and the use of city property is used, that's for an extended period of time. It's for an event that's, you know, takes up an afternoon or longer, things like that. What I envision, what I've heard from discussions with people concerning this, and I think is we need to put it together as quickly as possible for sure, is, you know, if we do close the street, it's for a very brief amount of time. I mean, if I need to have my kids walk out there and block the road, I will. If we don't have to, if we don't use the city police, you know? But I think there's opportunity to make sure that everybody is safe. We can get as many people out there as possible and get a good picture that we take up to Bob and make him smile. So chief, I don't want to speak for you, but I think there's a way to. Yep.
I'll answer any questions if you have them. We do not know. I have to line up photographers. We have to get some publicity out and, but we really need to have it done by the end of the week, first part of next week or later.
And as many people there as possible.
As many people as possible.
So Facebook or are you reaching out to people to keep people in the loop?
We will use Facebook. We will use KBHB, Smoke Signals. We'll use everything we can think of.
Yeah. So just keep your eyes open.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other matters from the public tonight? How about council? Anything to add? Mr. Nash is coming on up.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I come to you tonight as a concerned citizen because I saw something this last week that I didn't like. As an American, I didn't like it because I saw something that desanctified election law. And if we don't have law with an election, what do we have? We can maybe say we have something like Russia. We have a dictatorship like South Korea or North Korea, excuse me. I'm getting extreme there. Let me tell you what I saw. I got a text from a neighbor saying that they saw a political candidate for city council sign go up directly across from my house. Now, I do have to fairly admit, I am running for city council in Ward Three myself. I see a candidate sign go up in front of my house and they sent me a picture of this. And did you put this there as a joke talking about to one of the neighbors? No, of course not. So we start reaching out to the business owner that supposedly owns the property. And the, well, the manager, I should say, and the manager said, what went on? They said they've had an individual from the city during city hours show up and put a sign on the property. Okay, well, I get home later and as you all know from previous experiences, I have security cameras. And I do in fact see a city employee during regular business hours putting up a political sign. Okay, let me look into this because to me it seems ethically wrong that a city employee would be doing something during any type of election or campaigning during business hours. Seems like an unfair advantage to any other candidates. So I start digging and I start looking and I find if the city code or the, excuse me, the manual for city employees, there is a section on campaigning rules. Without boring you with the whole mumbo jumbo of it, it goes down to there are several factors that it lists that you can or cannot do as a city employee. A couple of them are use of city facilities, equipment, space, or resources demonstrating. Posting to blogs, social media, or other websites, soliciting votes, contributions, soliciting or receiving subscriptions, contributions, or political service from any person or any politic political purpose pertaining to the government of the city and all other political activities not considered part of normal duty. I also want to read underneath those lists, one thing it says. And that is employees shall not take or bestow an unfair advantage to one or several competing factions during any election. Therefore, employees are also prohibited from using their official position to influence elections. So after digging, I contacted the manager and I said, hey, what, you know, what's going on? Because the manager said, if I wanted to put up a sign, I don't care. And so I asked what, you know, what's their story? And they said, well, this particular person came in and, and now he is, and I quote this, quote unquote, doesn't want to get wrapped up with any problems with the city. To me, that shows a sign of fear that was put in him because this city employee showed up wanting to put down a political sign. On top of all this, I have a printout of the plots. Not only was this not technically put on private property, this is on a public thoroughfare on a couple of the signs that were put up. On this one in particular, it's actually the neighbor's house next door, not this business that owns that property. And this person has sent me many texts saying he does not want it there because he does not support this candidate. I said, leave it there until we can figure out this for sure. On my security videos, I see this city employee actually not only take it out, put it in the ground, but also take a picture of it. Now to me, once again, that seems kind of weird. Would you take a picture of every single political sign that you put down? No. It once again falls back on code of conduct, ethics, and immorality because not only does this violate city ordinance with certain sites being on public thoroughfare and it violates landowners' rights by getting to put on private property without permission, but it also violates state campaigning laws. And I did seek some counsel from the Secretary of State and they have advised me on some of my options going forward. But like I said, this is just wrong on so many levels. The worst part about it is it's generating animosity between business owners or businesses and political candidates that didn't need to be there. As I mentioned at the start, the sanctity of an election is our right to vote in a fair and honest election. And that is why I'm here right now because I refuse to drop to that level and make this an unfair or a dirty political race. This race has officially already been corrupted and that's the Secretary of State's words, not mine. How does the fairness of this election get reinstated at this point? I put the challenge to you, the council, to answer this question. How can we make this race fair again? I have my ideas. I hope you have yours. And once again, like I said, the Secretary of State has also given me some ideas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Right. I think we need to look into it, but may I also just ask you, Sean, really quick, have you talked to the candidate whose sign this was? Have you had a conversation with, with them?
I don't think we need to air dirty laundry here, so.
Any other matters before the council?
Can Sean answer if, just really quick, I'm just curious.
Repeat the question, please.
If you've had a conversation with the candidate whose sign this is for.
I tried reaching out to the phone number that I had, but I left a message, but I don't know if it's even the correct number. But I did try reaching out unfortunately.
Okay. Well, thank you. Yeah. And, and just know that. Well, thank you. Yeah. And, and just know that I, I concur with council members Martenson and Bashan in that this will, this will be looked into. And while I don't have an immediate response to your question, um, certainly we will be in touch with you and, and have, you know, conversations.
And I, and like I said, I, I did, you know, purposely keep names out for now and it didn't need to be public knowledge or anything like that at, at this point. And I, I did, uh, the, the handbook does say to um, confer with the city manager. And unfortunately, um, they just, we had to reschedule today and um, with my schedule, I couldn't, I couldn't go tomorrow. So, um, that's why I'm bringing it up here. And like I said, I wanted to keep it on a fair level without mentioning other candidates' names or anybody's names involved. So um, I will be around afterwards. Uh, if you guys want me to stick around for a second here, if you have any other questions or want to see the video or pictures or anything like that.
Do you have a pen with you?
I absolutely do.
Write my phone number down if you would.
Do you want me to just bring this up to you so you don't have to put your phone number out to the public or anything like that?
Oh, it's up there.
Okay.
Four nine zero ten fifty-four. I'm available twenty-three hours a day. Call anytime you want.
I appreciate that, Mike.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yep.
Is your purpose here tonight to make a formal complaint?
I don't want anybody in trouble over this. I wanna, I wanna get that straight out there. What I want is a fair race. Because that's what's the most important. Once again, the sanctity of an election is what the, what America is based off of. So I want a fair race.
And I think we agree with that. Yeah. And, and I think, you know, um, in regards to, um, Mr. Marshall's question, you know, let's, let's have us as a next like action step, get all of the facts and, you know, and, and what, what you've, um, put together, you know? And then I think we look it over and then kind of form the questions that need to be answered and, and the people that we need to speak to.
Well, like I said, I, I'll, I'll stick around a little bit after. If you guys have any questions, I, I know you have, uh, possibly executive session or anything like that, but I'll stick around for a little bit. So.
We have exec plans still, so.
Do you have a meeting scheduled for Daniel tomorrow or?
Uh, once, once again, we tried, um, I, I was trying to, but I, I have to work tomorrow yet. So I, I, we were texting back and forth and I know he ran out of time trying to get back from East River here. So um, it, we, we will have to reconferr on this, so.
And, and I think, you know, without overstepping bounds, it would be important perhaps that those of us on council who are not in an election race maybe could join in that meeting as well. Just, I think it's important to have more ears and eyes, you know, yeah, on this. Thanks.
As you pointed out, Rebecca, let's just get all the facts and then we'll look at it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Sean. Anything to add from council tonight for other matters? How about a motion for exec? Anybody willing to do that?
I'll make the motion.
We got a first by Mike and a second by Aaron. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed to no. Seven twenty-six, we'll start at seven thirty-one. We'll go five minutes till we start.